Okay, welcome you to the Hampton School Board meeting, Tuesday, December 11th at 6:00. If folks could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thanks.
Now I would like to present the Carol of the Bells.
Our colored bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away. Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, weak and the bold. Ding dong, ding dong, that is your song, ding-dong will ring all caroling. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they pound, raising the sound, o'er hill and dale telling their tale. Here they ring while people sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, merry, 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 merry Christmas. On and on they send, on without end, their joyful song to everyone. Our colored bells, sweet silver bells, all seem to say, throw cares away. Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, weak and the bold. Ding dong, ding dong, that is your song, ding-dong will ring all caroling. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, how they pound, raising the sound, o'er hill and dale telling their tale. Here they ring while people sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, merry, 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 merry Christmas. On and on they send, on without end, their joyful song to everyone. On and on they send, on without end, their joyful song to everyone. Ding dong, ding dong.
Thank you, that was awesome.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Nice way to start.
Did a beautiful start.
Okay. First order of business is Chief Sawyer.
Welcome.
And I thought all these folks were here to see me.
Yeah. It's gonna be tough to top that.
Yeah, it is, it is. First item, I just would like to say thank you to Dave O'Connor, Hampton Academy, and the entire SAU for the support we received yesterday for Rees Across America. It is a great tribute to this community, and we get great compliments from the organizers that this is one of their favorite stops just because of the reception they get from not just the town, but also the kids. I mean, that's a big thing to them, that the kids come out and participate in this program. And so, it was a great showing yesterday, so thank you again.
I saw a lot of pictures, and I can't remember where I saw them. There were a lot of pictures of the event.
Oh yeah, it was very well-covered, Channel 9 covered it, they did a nice piece on it. No local media, and obviously, social media, there was pictures everywhere on it. So, it's a great tribute again to the community, and we couldn't have done it without the support of SAU 90, so thank you again. So, I would offer, Deputy Chief Hobbs will not be joining us tonight, unfortunately. One of our officers, Jason Jackson, his father passed away, so there's a large contingent down at the Wake assisting the family, and Dave's heading that up. So, I offer my apologies, because he is my go-to guy on school safety things, but I'll try to muddle through with you.
Well, we just thought we should have you in every couple months, every three months, just to see how things going with the new resource officer.
Yes, both officers are new, as you remember. Officer Robinson, Detective Robinson went back to the patrol force. So, you now have Officer, Detective DiMarco at the Academy, and Officer, Detective Feely covering the other two schools, Marston and Center School, doing kind of double duty, covering those. So, from all accounts on, from the police department's perspective, it's been a great relationship, and it's just getting better. Both officers are very happy in their assignments, and have found working in schools and the staff to be very supportive and really believing in the fundamentals of school safety, so.
And as you are probably aware, we are going to put forth a warrant for a third and final school resource officer for one of the schools that doesn't have one. I know that this, they're being shared, but this will give a dedicated person to each school, and I'm, I think we've spoken before, and I believe you're still supportive of that.
I wholeheartedly support that. I recently was up at the Department of Safety for a meeting with Assistant Commissioner Quinn, the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Homeland Security, representatives from the state police, the Chiefs Association, and fire representatives, talking about the task force that I was a member of, and some of the findings that were put out. And one of the programs was a school marshals program that we're still researching, but in the absence of any enabling legislation, that's not a possibility at this time. So, one of the great things about this community is the support we receive for our school safety programs. We are far ahead of the curve, we're doing a great job, and New Hampshire is probably one of the most proactive states as far as school safety goes. When you look at the comparisons to how quickly funding that was received from the federal Department of Justice and Education, how quickly we dispersed those funds out to the schools, and actually took proactive steps, so we're still ahead of the game.
So, this is a question that someone asked me the other day in Shop &amp; Safe. Hanafords, is it Hanafords? It used to be Shop &amp; Safe. Hanafords, which is why I don't go into Hanafords, one of many reasons why I don't go into Hanafords. But, it was about people carrying weapons into schools, and I said, and I hope I answered it correctly. We have a board policy that prohibits carrying guns and having guns on school grounds, firearms on school grounds. However, the state has a different policy which allows people to do that. Can you talk about that? Did I answer that person correctly?
You answered the question to the knowledge you had on it, so it's not an incorrect answer, but that is a constant issue we face. The federal government, the Safe Schools Act prohibits firearms from being carried on school grounds so long as the state has enabling legislation that allows the individual school boards to pass a policy prohibiting those firearms from being on their grounds. At this time, there is no enabling legislation in the state of New Hampshire that gives you the authorization to create a policy that is enforceable, okay? So, were you to call us and say, you know, this so-and-so is on the, you know, out at the basketball court at the Academy carrying a firearm, we would certainly show up, we would investigate, but there would be no criminal charges, because that is not a crime in the state of New Hampshire. Despite the fact that your board has a policy, you can't prohibit somebody from exercising their rights under the current laws. And this all became the light, and if you recall, a couple years ago, there was a lot of controversy where schools are used as polling places.
Correct.
And people were showing up carrying firearms, and that's the one that really brought it to light. And you have to remember, we are, our structure of government in the state of New Hampshire, every entity, boards of selectmen, school boards, are subdivisions of the state government. We are not a home rule state. So, being subdivisions of state government, we cannot enact a policy or an ordinance unless there is a state law that enables that, okay? So, if there's an absence of a law or a rule on something, it does not give us as a subdivision, be it the town or the school, the right to enact a regulation or an ordinance to deal with an issue such as what we're talking about right now. So, right now, while you have a administrative policy, it's not something the police department could enforce.
That explains it.
I'm hoping at some point, we move forward. Again, the federal government says we can do it, but it's up to the state to create enabling legislation. So, if you're concerned with that, I would certainly reach out to your local delegation here and ask for them to pursue something along that line, and you would have my support on that. I just don't believe, I believe in gun owner rights, I support that, but I think in certain circumstances, firearms do not belong, courtrooms don't allow it unless you're there as a police officer, they don't allow firearms in a courtroom. And I think schools fallen in, considering the tragedies that we so frequently get highlighted in the media, I just don't think we need to have that type of thing. I think firearms in schools should be handled by professionals, and I know that may make me unpopular with some, the gun owner rights people, but I just think schools are one of those places where firearms don't belong, except in the hands of the professionals.
Let me, I just wanted to, I've had a couple of conversations with parents who have asked, and I think it's worth saying, our schools are closed campuses during the day. So, even as we talked about the fact that, we talked about what you just said.
Yeah.
The reality is, from the time school starts and the doors are locked and the kids are all in until the end of the day, it's not, it's not like walking through a public park.
Exactly.
The public doesn't have a right to just walk through with a gun all day long, because they don't have any reason to be there. In the conversation that we had, I wanted to put, I put these folks at ease a little bit by saying, we only do elections in the building a very small number of times, and there's only a small number of instances where the concerns that we're now talking about really play in, because otherwise, the schools are for school use only during the day.
That is correct.
Is that fair?
There are certainly limitations on uses of property that you do have the right to exercise, but if somebody is on your grounds for a legitimate purpose, let's say it's a meeting with a principal or something like that.
Right.
And they happen to be carrying a firearm, that in itself is not cause to deny them access for that meeting. So, you just, and I would, I would highly recommend, if you're gonna talk about these things in further depth, to reach out to your counsel and have a serious discussion with your legal counsel on this. You're getting the perspective of police chief as the enforceability as far as a criminal act, but you, we're delving now into civil areas and people's rights to carry a firearm in certain areas, you want to have a deep discussion with your legal counsel before you enact anything.
Chief, we have had this conversation a number of times.
Okay.
And Pepper brought up the concern about the elections and people having access in the buildings. And to follow that up, we did reach out to our legal counsel, so Leslie is the legal counsel for the school board, and his response is pretty much what you just said. And, you know, because there's no enabling legislation, we have no right to prohibit somebody from carrying a weapon on the school grounds.
The New Hampshire School Board Association is working on this and has come forth with some procedures, policies, whatever, that they're presenting to the state. So, I know it's being worked on by the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Right, and they believe in the legislation that the schools should be safe zones, but they've not been able to move that forward, given the legislature that it was currently standing. So, I think that my advice is, and I've already talked to several of your representatives, that I thought it would be important for, to call them in and ask them to visit with you and discuss some of the issues that you have. I mean, gun control is one, you have several others, and, but I talked to several of them, and they're willing to come in and sit down and talk with you, so I would put that on the agenda for them.
Well, I think we should also, you know, going one step further, ask our representatives that are newly elected and taking office in January to pursue that issue for us at the state level.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get them in, do they take office January 1st?
Yeah.
I don't know if we can get them into the January board meeting, but definitely the February board meeting.
Well, I think if Kathleen just reaches out and expresses our concern to all four of them, okay, and, you know, so they at least know what to expect.
One of the things I just want to make sure we're clear on too, as a board, you do have a right to enact policies for your employees. You may prohibit firearms in the workplace, so with your teachers and your staff, you have the authority to prohibit that. Also, with your students, you have the authority to do that. It's the citizen that's coming in there to do whatever business, you know, legitimate business, that's really the issue, is to whether the firearm should be on the grounds, and I think that's the controversy, and that's where the enabling legislation does not exist to allow that yet.
And I don't believe we have a policy on that, do we?
We have a policy with no guns allowed on school grounds.
No, for employees.
It covers all of them. It covers students, employees. I mean, you have a blanket policy that doesn't allow anyone, it's just that you can't, you can't maintain it, because an adult could walk on campus with a gun.
Does anybody have anything else for the chief?
My only comment is, is that, you know, the SRO program has been very successful, the three principals are here, and I think all three of them would attest to the fact that the relationships that they have with the SROs and the response that they have and the work that they're doing with the children is outstanding. So, again, I really always appreciate the partnership with the Hampton Police Department, and I told Deputy Chief Hobbs a couple weeks ago, that even when I call at 4:00 in the morning, your dispatcher is so helpful in terms of Nathan and I having to make decisions about school safety, and that's getting kids to and from school. So, all around, chief, I can't say enough about the department and the response they have to us as a department of the town.
That's great to hear, and it's one of those things that the buy-in from the officers, even the ones that aren't SROs, that school safety is a top priority in this community. You drive through at any time, school, people going to school or getting out of school, you'll feel that presence. Now, some communities don't like that, this community has embraced it, having the officers there, out at the crosswalks, visible with the kids, to be a deterrent, so these type of things don't take place in this community.
And even when some of them are out on their route, you know, as they drive about town, they'll come through the school stop and visit the kids in the cafeteria, or just say hello, I mean, just go in the hallway, and again, it's all about relationships.
Good to hear.
Do your SROs meet occasionally with the Wintecottan SRO?
Yes. I believe Detective DeLuca came down and assisted with some of the lockdown drills and vice versa. We try to use the SROs, even though they're separate SAUs.
Right.
Like, on the football games on Friday night at Wintecottan High School, I have the SROs from SAU 90 meet Detective DeLuca up there and work, because many of the folks coming there, you see it all the time, you see parents dropping the kids off for the football game, so they can go have a, you know, a quick bite to eat or something away from the kids and stuff, so they're there. And it's very helpful when we have the officer that works in those schools present to talk to the kids, if, you know, they're getting a little unruly or having a little problem, it's a familiar face for them. They wouldn't know Detective DeLuca at that age, they won't get to meet him until they get up to the high school. So, constantly working together on safety programs, the Alice program, Detective DeLuca has been off to the training, and we're trying to really get that throughout all of our schools, throughout the community, both SAUs and any of the private schools, we're really trying to get that as our standard of level of training with our staffs. So, they work all the time together.
Great, great. Anyone have anything else for the chief?
No, thank you.
And if you need anything from us moving forward on that warrant article, please let me know. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Great, have a good meeting.
Giving up your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Board member updates. Mr. DeLuca?
I'd like to reserve comments on the budget to non-public.
Okay, remind us later on to do that. Wellness?
Wellness committee is meeting in January on the 16th, and right now, I think they're still working on trying to get folks to buy into the health trust slice of life, so that they can earn money toward their wellness programs.
Is that it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
New Hampshire School Boards Association, I'm guessing that you folks got a little packet a couple days ago from the School Boards Association. If, they would like us to take a vote, okay, on the proposals that are in that packet, and I can sum them up for you.
Okay.
They have recommended no action, or they've been opposed to, there were a bunch in here from Raymond, and there were some from Keane, and there were some from Messineck. So, I guess the first order of business, if we could, if we could have a motion to support those that are not recommended or not needed, because they're redundant, so can I, can we have a?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved Pepper, seconded Frank.
Did everyone receive those?
Yeah, they just nodded and said that they did.
Did you get yours?
I happened to read them on someone's desk, but I did not receive my own copy.
I think it came in today's mail.
Okay.
There was a packet that came in today's mail.
Well, the motion that you just made, it's pretty, it's pretty vanilla, so, any other discussion on that? All those in favor, 400. And, the only one that needed... The School Boards Association calls upon the United States Congress, the New Hampshire Legislature, and local public safety agencies to prioritize collaborative threat assessment and crisis planning with school districts, and further supports legislation at the federal, state, and local levels that protects students and school district employees from on-campus violence. And I thought, we might want to have a motion to support that resolution.
I'd make a motion to support that.
Seconded?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay, so that's how I will vote when I go in January, you've just given me direction. Anything changes? Anything changes, let me know before January. Okay. SLC, Mr. DeLuca?
I have, there was nothing I know of, I'll, that question to Kathleen.
Right, we have a meeting on Friday, so I'll get more information, they're sort of still on a holding pattern relative to a suitable facility for the, for the school.
The negotiations with the parents, that's finished, they have...
We've approved it and ratified it at the...
They've ratified it, so that'll go before the voters. Rec Department?
Kind of laying low after Christmas, we'll dig in in the spring with all the sports that'll come.
Building Committee?
We don't have a meeting until January 16th, however, as far as I know, everything continues to proceed on course, and they're working on the 39 wing, so there's quite a bit of work to be done there. And the only other thing I can say is, everywhere I go in the community, people are just thrilled with what they see. The people that have been through there on, in November 10th were thrilled, everybody is just so excited about it, and I'm excited too. It's on course, everything's going well, and like I said, the 39 wing is being worked on now.
We'll update you a little bit more in Nathan's report, but I think Monday, Chief referred to the Rees Across America, that's, that was a community event and held at the new, in the new gym.
In the new gym, which was awesome, yeah.
Which was perfect. With plenty of room, the gym will hold just about 1,000 people.
Wow.
And we have a permit from the Fire Department for that, so.
That's even better.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
We've had trouble in the past getting that permit.
We don't have seating for that.
We have the bleachers and then chairs on the floor.
Chairs on the floor.
That, that...
And the bleachers hold what, 250?
About...
250.
So, I'm just guessing, and it was something that I thought of when I saw the pictures, I saw the blue chairs that people were sitting in, you must have some sort of a mat to put down over the wooden floor.
We're working on it.
We're working on it right now, not yet.
Okay.
But we're working on it, we have several bids we've received, so we're trying to find the best product.
Just a, I know the auditorium is not finished yet, but are we going to have some sort of an electronic sign-up for those, for the gym and the auditorium, where people can go? I'll just bring it up, if you go to Wintecottan's website, you can book the auditorium, you can book this and that, we might want to look into that. Okay. Comcast, all right?
There was no meeting, so our next scheduled meeting is going to be mid to late January, and we're right now in the process of reviewing a survey that will go out to town of Hampton.
Nice.
Will it be an electronic survey?
No, it will be electronic and possibly mail as well.
Curriculum, Andrew?
I know that art, music, library, science, social studies, they continue to work on aligning the working curriculum and rubrics with obviously state and national standards while embedding test preparation in the lessons. I think they also continue to work on performance and standards-based assessment and grading. And we've got some people coming in from outside to work on that, from UNH, and is UNH coming in to do that?
Not, no, they're doing the cell stuff.
Oh, okay, all right. I know there are outside people though, coming in as consultants to help out.
And professional development?
Our meeting is January 15th, so I'll have a report in February.
Is this the new staff development plan? You have three-year, five-year plans that you submit to the state, is that what you're working on? When does our current one expire, this, the end of the year?
No, we just did a new one.
Okay.
Yeah, it was very extensive.
Okay, good?
Yeah.
Okay. Public comment on agenda items. Okay, protocols for critical incidents, Mr. Billsbury?
This is just an art act that I wanted to just hand around to them. Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today, I appreciate the opportunity. I wanted to start by saying that, so I'm the new kid on the block, and I spent 16-plus years in Rochester, working on the very thing that I'm going to be talking to you about tonight, and so, coming to Hampton was certainly a big change for me. It's important, though, that I start by commending all of you and my colleagues seated behind me. on the commitment that is very palpable to me in this community for student wellness and safety and success. And I'm excited that I get to do this presentation on the heels of the choir performing and the chief giving a presentation, because in my mind, what I'm presenting to you all is sort of a blend of the two. Except I'm not going to sing because nobody needs to see that. So the reason I say it's a blend is because what I'm presenting to you tonight is all about student and staff and community member well-being during times of significant crisis. And what I believe strongly in is what we capitalize on to be able to do that successfully is that sense of community that I was really sort of seeing on all of your faces while the choir was presenting. And that's the exciting part. So I, I come in and do this work when things have gone significantly downhill for reasons of tragedy and catastrophe. And my job in those moments is to be able to lead a school toward capitalizing on the strength of their sense of community in order to be able to get through the, the initial aftermath of a significant crisis and to be able to set the stage for resilience moving forward. So that's, that's what I'm sort of capitalizing on and trying to present to all of you. What you have in your packet is the handout that I gave to the district administrators when I presented this to them. And in the spirit of full disclosure, that presentation was a condensed version of a much larger presentation that I do. And so this presentation for all of you, in the spirit of efficiency and timeliness and respect for all of your busy schedules, is an even more condensed version of a condensed version. So I'm going to give you just a very basic overview and really welcome you to jump in with questions at any time. Knowing that you have a lot of the information in front of you, I'm going to just go over just the highlights of it so that I can just emphasize a couple of things, but please jump in with questions. I'm, I'm happy to answer anything that I can. So I want to, I want to start by first sort of trying to sell you on a little bit of my credibility just so that you know that this, I'm not some schmoo off the street who is trying to sell you a bill of goods. So I've been doing this work for fifteen-plus years. When I started in the Rochester School District, I was part of a pilot of school mental health folks who joined a regional critical incident response team that got together and responded at times of significant crisis in the community, primarily at other schools. And this was a movement that was, that was really taking hold after nine eleven. And based on the recognition that at times of significant catastrophe or tragedy, it wasn't just public safety that people had to be mindful of and responsive to. It was also the emotional well-being of the people who are being impacted. So it really began after nine eleven and has become pretty much standard issue in terms of emergency operations, that there is a simultaneous rollout of behavioral health response anytime there's a significant tragedy or catastrophe or disaster or what have you. And it sort of makes sense that you would assume that people who are in the wake of such an event would have a behavioral health response to that. What's less common, but growing increasingly more common, is the recognition that there needs to be an actual framework of supports that get rolled out at the exact same time as a public safety response. So I worked closely with the New Hampshire Homeland Security and Emergency Management, and they, they're charged with supporting districts to develop comprehensive emergency operations plan. My little piece of that pie was to also help districts to embed in their emergency operations plan a behavioral health response network or a framework to meet the psychological needs of the people impacted by the crisis. And that's not just kids, that's anybody in the school community who is being immediately impacted by the event that has taken place. So the, the definition that I, that I like to amplify is that a critical incident is different than just crisis. I'm a counselor and I deal with crisis a good deal of my day every day. But what I'm talking about when I'm referring to a critical incident is something much more catastrophic, much more tragic, and by definition, it is anything that has such a significant impact that the immediate supports in the environment are overwhelmed and aren't able to manage it without support. Now that can look like just about anything. And in the, the, my previous district, working with eleven to twelve different schools, the same event could occur in the community and two different schools could have two totally different senses of what the impact of that was and whether or not that rose to the level of being a critical incident. So my role isn't really to judge people's perception of whether or not it's a critical incident. My role is to really help them to mobilize the supports necessary to foster resilience in the wake of whatever is going on.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
If you could ask some examples of critical incidents?
Sure. So in the sixteen years that I've been doing this, I've responded to student suicides, faculty member deaths, sudden death situations. So it's anything that really rises to the level of being so outside of the norm. I mean, as a, as a counselor, my day-to-day efforts, I mean, crisis is part and parcel to what I do. This is something that is really sudden, unexpected, and really requires specialized kind of support in order to help people to get through it.
Thank you.
Sure. So critical incident response is, is, it's, a lot of times what you'll hear in media after like a school shooting or something, they'll say things like, "A team of grief counselors was on hand to support the school community." So those of us who do this work know that that's a bit of a misnomer. We're not grief counselors when we're, we're in immediate response mode. Grief counseling is a much longer-term, more in-depth kind of process. What we are is literally attacking, attacking the crisis. So we are trying to mitigate the immediate impact of the crisis with a very systematic framework of interventions. So it's not counseling, it's not long-term mental health care, it's a therapeutic Band-Aid on the impact of what's gone, gone on. And it's typically something that is happening in the immediate aftermath. We wouldn't be activated long after a significant event unless there was still a lingering severe impact afoot. So critical incident response, it's, it's short-term. It's designed to really just mobilize all of the strengths of the community in order to be able to get, get through the immediate crisis situation and to follow a framework in order to support that was happening. So it's not, nobody's winging it. It's something that's done very methodically and systematically in order to support a community. It doesn't take the place of the supports in the immediate school system. So for instance, if there was a significant tragedy at one of our schools, the crisis team response wouldn't take, wouldn't take over for the counselors in the building. They would support the efforts of the counselors in the building and provide for the entire school a framework of supports to get through the situation. So there are some things that we're able to do, like just being able to help a school to just reduce the emotional tension that courses through a, a school community after an event like that. It's a lot of first aid, if you think of it that way. It's a lot of triage. That's a lot of stabilization in the immediate aftermath. It's helping people to mobilize their own coping strategies. And so that happens at the individual level and at the larger group level. There's an emphasis on the what-to-do and what-not-to-do aspect of, of critical incident response so that we're sure that we're making suitable decisions and not making the situation worse. And the idea is that we are providing the kind of Band-Aid that allows the local support, meaning the counselors or the people on hand in the immediate school environment, to be able to more clearly recognize those individuals who are so impacted that they are going to require the longer-term support. So we don't provide that long-term support. We help sort of mitigate the, the initial response to what's going on in order to make individuals who really do need that long-term support more visible. So there are a lot of strategies that we do to support that. So that was a big mouthful of things to, to sort of give you an overview. Love to hear your questions and, and.
Yes, I, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you're, you're going to be, or you are the critical incident response leader-ish?
That's the idea, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the role that I served in Rochester.
And there are some other people that are in place to work with you?
So what we wanted to do first is to be able to have the conversation about this idea at the administrative level to make sure that we have the support to move forward. So part of this is admittedly a bit of a, a sales pitch to all of you. Next steps would be, with your consent, really starting to assemble a team.
So we're just, we're just starting this?
Right. So it didn't make sense in my mind to, to start building a team without making sure that all of the important stakeholders were involved in the conversation from the beginning so that everybody knows exactly what we're talking about and what that would entail for this district.
Would, would you envision having fairly frequent meetings with the team? I, I'll tell you what I'm getting at.
Yep.
I've seen books similar to that, and people get together and they have one meeting and then they put the notebook back where notebooks go.
Yes.
And it might be a year or two before, you know?
Yep. So what, what I would be advocating for would be, so the training is a bit extensive because it's, it's, it's a framework that I didn't invent. I've just modified it to suit schools in particular. And it's about a two-day training for the team members. And what I have passed around to you is something that I had created for the Rochester School District that has all of the interventions that the team members would be performing. It has the protocol of, of how the team would be activated and what the steps would be. And then there would be an expectation or desire, I guess I should say, for me to be able to conduct ongoing professional development because you only really get good at these skills when you're using them. And what you hope for is that you don't have to use them. So it would be important for me to continue to meet with the team, to do scenarios and things like that. So we would be practicing much like you would be practicing for an emergency operations rollout.
Right. Well, that's my, my point, because if it's not frequent and it's not talked about often, it just gets shelved. How many people, I wouldn't hold you to it.
Okay.
What would you be thinking would be a group? You have three schools, what, what would you be thinking offhand?
Yeah, so, so in Rochester, I had thirty, but I had the luxury of it being a large district and we had some grant funding to pay for some training and things like that. So in a district this size, we can't just pull counselors because there's not enough. But the beauty of this critical incident response is it's not a mental health intervention. It's, it's a framework that actually originated in public safety. So it was created by EMS folks to support each other, to be able to get through the impact of being in constant crisis response mode. So it would be really anybody that has the right sort of frame of mind to be able to do response at significant times of crisis. And we've been in talks with the neighboring SAU to join forces because I think that only makes sense, because in a, in a town this small, it's conceivable that if there was a large-scale event, it would have too great an impact on the immediate team members in this community. And we would need to rely on bringing in some neighboring folks in order to be able to support.
Sure.
And vice versa. The other thing that I want to say is that, so I serve on the state, the state of New Hampshire Disaster Behavioral Health Response Team. All of the framework of these interventions directly align with the state's intervention. So if there were ever an event that was too sizable for us to manage ourselves, I could be calling in the state and we'd already be talking the same language and following the same procedures and interventions.
So. Why don't we use Rochester, because that's where you were familiar with this?
Sure.
What was the costs of doing this in Rochester?
Right.
Ballpark?
Yep, so really the costs were minimal. We got to do fancy manuals and things like that because we had some grant funds to be able to do it. The, the cost is really the time involved in training the people who would serve on the team because it requires taking them out of their everyday role for a couple of days to do the training and then whatever needs would be for ongoing professional development. The support and relationship that we would have with the state Disaster Behavioral Health Response Team comes to us at no cost. One of their missions is to foster local control and support networks in order to be able to spread that wealth because they recognize that even though they're a state entity, they can't do it all either, and they must build that capacity at the local level. So the cost is very minimal.
One other, one other, have, have you outlined this with the three building principals?
That is the, yep, that's the content of the presentation that I provided to the building principals.
Okay.
Yep.
And I'm guessing they were supportive?
They seemed to be, I didn't hear that they weren't.
Why wouldn't they?
Right, yeah.
The, the nice part about this too is, as you said in the presentation to us, is, you know, the building principals are still the, the go-to person. They're still in charge of their building, and so the team would work directly with our building administrators. They would not supersede them in terms of the, and but advise them and direct them in a way that would be helpful to, to the crises.
Well, and this frees up the building principals to take care of all of the needs of their building while a crisis event is, you know, unfolding. So they don't have to worry about all the nuts and bolts about how to attend to the logistics of the crisis. They can be attending to the needs of their staff and students and parents and community members.
And how would the selection process go about putting, putting a team together?
Yeah, well, I, I think that.
Criteria?
Yeah, in Rochester, we were, we were so big that it, you know, I recruited from counseling teams, psychologists, social workers, and nurses because I had, you know, thirty or more to, to be able to pick from. Really, that comes from having conversations with administrators and people being recommended. Because it's, it's really, I would have to do a presentation on what the, sort of the right mentality of doing this work would be. And I typically am doing this kind of training with a room full of counselors and the first thing that I tell them is, "This is not counseling. This is a crisis response framework that is you taking off your counselor hat and putting on a critical incident responder hat, following a whole different framework than what you would be utilizing in your everyday work." So I, I can pull from any number of different pools of people who are just suited to doing this kind of work.
And what's the criteria for a suited individual?
Well, a lot of it is, I, I, I don't know the district well enough to, you know, all the different individuals to be able to, to handpick them without input. So I think that, you know, certainly the administrators have been given an overview of what this entails and what it's about, and I would be looking to people being able to give me some suggestions on who would be suited based on the criteria of being able to do this at very high-intensity instances.
So there would be a panel involved in the selection process?
I think so. I, I think it, I would really rely on the input of others because I don't, I don't know all of the people in the district well enough yet to be able to, to select them. So I, I can give people a sense of the, the kind of person that's suited to it. And, and then the other thing too is that the team would need to be large enough that we can capitalize on individual strengths at different times. that we can capitalize on individual strengths at different times.
And you said you had thirty in Rochester that were involved?
Yeah, in a district this size, well, if we're taking into consideration the neighboring district, you know, it would need to be... A district this size, I would be thinking around twelve or so people. But if we're going to factor in the neighboring district, it would need to be larger. But the nice thing about that is that we can support each other in times of crisis. And, you know, one of the things that I... When I'm going out talking about this work is it's not a matter of if we need to have this kind of support in place. It's really just a matter of when. You know, I've been doing this work a really long time. And some game changers for me in terms of staying in this work. Social media is a significant game changer in the intensity of the kinds of crises that emerge. I will tell you that I've responded to and supported schools a number of times with regard to student suicide. And the age of kids taking their own lives, in my experience, has been getting younger and younger, which is terrifying, but also is a wake-up call that we really need to be prepared for the inevitability of these kinds of crises.
So, you would like a motion from the board to support this and go forward with this?
I'd like to know, have you approached the SAU twenty-one or...
Yeah, my understanding is that Mrs. Murphy's had a conversation with them, yes. And I've spoken with... So, I attend, you know, a regular meeting with social workers who represent all of the different schools in the SAU. And they definitely see a need and benefit of being able to do it. The conversations about the logistics of that are above my pay grade, but my understanding is that there's definitely interest. And it goes hand in hand with a sensible emergency operations plan. And what gets developed is literally a very prescribed protocol on how things are going to be managed at times when chaos could easily reign if we didn't have a plan in place. And just having the plan can offer a lot of comfort to people in the middle of a crisis.
So, again, you're looking for a motion of support for this?
I would love that, but I think...
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I'll make that motion right now that we support this critical incident response team as presented by Mr. Pillsbury.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yep. What is your current role right now in SAU ninety?
Pupil Services Counselor for the district.
Do you have a caseload? Are you a case manager?
I have a caseload of students that I see for counseling, yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Happy holidays.
You too.
Just to follow up, Frank, I did talk to Dr. Limpini over at SAU twenty-one. I did talk to Bill Limpini over at SA twenty-one. When they presented to the leadership team, then I followed it up with a conversation with Bill. And twenty-one is absolutely on board with this. So, we'll be working together with them as we develop the team and all the protocols. I mean, we have a lot of work to do here, but I think it's just being prepared.
One thing I would say though is that since I've already done it... Not that this is one size fits all, but since I've already done it, it's really just adapting the work that I've already done elsewhere and making it specific to this school community. So, whereas in Rochester where I really started from scratch when I developed all of these things, all of that hard work has already been done and I have all of the templates and so that expedites this process in terms of implementation for sure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Principals report.
Good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Busy month.
At Center School, you have a copy of my report. Very happy to report that report cards went home yesterday. Four o'clock, they went live, talking to my colleagues. All seems to be going well. I have not received any concerns or comments about them. So, I think that prior articulation about the standards-based reporting has really paid off in dividends and worked out very well, at least at my level at Center School. So, that's gone out well. A lot of night events, got another school concert tomorrow night. Grade one is all set to roll for their annual Christmas concert tomorrow night. And Al Magnuson is spending the week with us, working with my grade-level teachers, imparting his science knowledge to us at the younger age schools. So, it's really... It's nice he's been at our school several times. Been a great addition to the district. He's gone on and visited classrooms, not in a science capacity. He needed to see how a primary school functions first. So, he had to go in and actually visit with the kids. He told a great story today how he started his tour of the schools with the eighth graders and ended up literally in the preschool kindergarten level and down on the ground, working with kindergarten, working on long and short vowel sounds. So, it was great to see him and he's got some great ideas. We're looking forward to that continued partnership. Any questions for me?
I think I just need you to go over one time.
One time.
For some parents who don't understand.
Sure.
Four, three, two, one. The four is the highest, correct?
Yes, Lois and I aligned our report cards this year. Four is exceeding an end-of-the-year standard.
Okay.
Remember, standards are based on what the child needs to know and be able to do by the end of grade X. So, it's very, very unusual for a student to be exceeding a standard at the very beginning of the previous grade level.
And that's the same as at Marston?
They are on a four, three, two, one level as well.
Right, okay. PM, is there another letter that I'm missing on the report card? PM for maybe behaviors?
In E, is this... You talking about the middle school right now?
No, I'm talking about Center in Marston.
Exceeds, yeah, so we have a four-point...
P is partial?
Yeah, we have a four... It should be in that front page that has... It's on the front page of the report card. There is an index that clarifies all the language, what it is. I also sent a pamphlet home with students yesterday that explained all of those terminologies. I personally, it was not electronic, this was a paper version that went out. What is standards-based reporting? What are the grading systems? What does each of the numbers stand for, both on the academic side and also behaviors affecting success in the classroom?
Are we still working on trying to put this together with the middle school? Because the middle school is different.
We... They're closer now than they have been.
Okay. Okay, I'd just like to see all three schools have a consistent numbers, letters, whatever. Just I know a few parents have said...
Absolutely.
Okay, I got this, but I got this, and I don't know, and one and two, and three and four, and P and the M. So, just as long as we're all working on trying to make it consistent, that would help.
Okay, appreciate that. I know I'm feeding into Marston School in this consistency.
Thank you.
Wait till you come up. Any other questions from my school specifically?
No, we're good, thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you for all your support. We had a wonderful parade, as you might have heard as well, with the float and everything, so...
So, he didn't tell you that his float got first place? And he's got a plaque, a trophy, or whatever, and so his school did great.
That's awesome.
Have a great holiday. Thank you for your support.
Hello?
Little conversation with my colleague. We were just talking about the differences in report card. I think there was a... There were great efforts this summer to look K-eight and to have some consistency, so just a little sidebar. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thanks.
I know it's busy, so... Questions for my report?
Does anybody have any questions?
We have our holiday concert coming up. It'll be a week from this Wednesday night. It'll be the nineteenth, and that'll be Wednesday. It will be at Winnicott, right? Because we were debating back and forth, but it will be at Winnicott. So, seven o'clock, so everyone's welcome to come. It'll be an original by Mr. Carlson and our fifth graders, so sure to be a crowd pleaser.
You're not having it at the new gym?
Well, next year.
Next year, you'll be able to use the...
Yep, next year, yep, next year, that's right. So, something to look forward to, right? So, yeah. I guess I just want to say one thing because I did leave Mr. Lanny hanging the other night about the flying dogs. And just, I guess it just goes to show how, I guess how current the narratives are. So, when I did go back to school, I had a conversation with Lisa McCarthy, my administrative assistant, and she said, yeah, she said that was one of the changes this year. It is going to be part of our field day, so I'm really excited about it. It's going to be fabulous, so just because I didn't want to leave you hanging.
That's fine.
So, yeah, so it should be, it should be great, though. They'll have a great time with that. But they do, they do keep them fresh, so there's testimony that the narratives are fresh. We try to keep them current, so, yeah, take that very seriously.
Just to prevent parents from knowing what's going on, that's a big thing.
Well, we like to keep it a surprise for the kids too, for the field day anyways, but... So, it should be great. Thank you. Got some great donations, but you probably saw that from...
Yeah, she's going to...
Yeah, so some great donations from our... Thank you.
I need to go back to Tim one time.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I did find something that I did have a question on, but it wasn't until I turned the page. Can you just talk a little bit about the win? What I need?
Yeah, a lot of schools have intervention blocks that are built in, especially in the elementary level. We just have an acronym for it, that's all. It's a built-in progressive type of intervention block based on what grade level you are. Kindergarten, all of the interventions are really still based in the classroom. We differentiate solely in the classroom because they're not ready. In first grade, we pick an area through our PLC here at Tom Data Dives to determine what our strongest need is, and we do a quick fix, a three, or four, or five-week intervention, thirty minutes, two times a week. And everybody gets either enrichment or intervention on that area. And by the time they're in second grade, they can have three times a week. So, it's gets progressive, K to one to two, and it switches up based on our data dives all the time. So, we could be working on simple addition facts, for example, for a five-week period and then move into some type of an equation or some type of measure system or something like that. And the students have an opportunity to work in small groups. So, we take, for example, in first grade, eighty-two students. And eighty-two students, instead of dividing it by the six, we're dividing it by ten teachers now who are doing an intervention block. We've created a master schedule to allow for an intervention block. Sometimes you call it, you see it in a schedule, just called intervention block. It's where Title I, our support services, can go on as well. But we call it win, we just like the title. It's what I need. Every child gets instructional based on what they need, so they're not... It's a form of differentiation, is what it is.
What happens with the kids in the middle? Do they just sort of...
Oh, no, they all have a skill. We have, for example, thirty types of a performance test, thirty areas, and every child is identified with an area that they need.
Okay.
Some of them have five areas to work on, some of them have three areas to work on, some of them have one. And if they master that one, the goal is to move students into proficiency, as many students as proficiency, and to have a long-range effect. So, when they take their first test in third grade, the state assessment, we've filled some gaps. We've made a conscious whole-school effort to fill gaps rather than move on.
Thanks, that just piqued my interest.
That's why I wanted to put that in. I put that in on purpose once a year to let you know what we're doing. And I also put it in the newsletters as well so the parents can have an opportunity to have questions if they have any questions. Because they truly trust us, what we're doing, but I want them to have an opportunity.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. Mr. Lannon just described our shock block at Hampton Academy. We use the same model. And I am going to try to find out more about the flying dogs because I think it sounds like a cool group to have, so we may be putting that forward next year.
I tried one in the Hampton Parade with a dog.
I did, that's Bunker.
He's a little bit big to be flying.
Yes, no, he just flies from couch to rug, that's about it. So, we've had, you know, a wonderful opening of the new building. You know, not without some bumps. We're working on balancing the heat. There are some punch lists to do, but I will share the chief's assessment that it's a beautiful building. And we've gotten several personal letters, people who have come back and just said, "What a great thing for the community." So, I'm very grateful. Happy holidays. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things if I could. Today, all the SOOs were at Hampton Academy. They came over today to... They brought a check over. The Hampton Police Association is donating one of our scoreboards. So, they came over today and presented that check to us and we're very grateful to the Hampton Police. Later date, the Hampton Fire Department is... They've also supporting a scoreboard, so they'll be in. And we had our first two home games at Hampton Academy against CMS. So, it was a tough start for our... So, the games didn't go all our ways, but the gym again got some great accolades and everybody loved the facility. The team is... It's early in the season, so we're, you know what, we're progressing. The other thing is, there's been... You've mentioned some great donations and I saw that for the Greek Giving Tree. Many of them are anonymous, they go right to Janine. But the Hampton Rotary Club, once again, has supported the Giving Tree. Giving Tree is a tree we put up in the schools. And there's ornaments on there with gifts for children. And our staff participate very exclusively, but sometimes the supply and demand always supplies. So, Hampton Rotary's gifts to support this effort, to make sure that children have gifts under the tree is commendable, and I appreciate that. I want to talk about, we did have an event that I really didn't talk much about. It was a STEM event. It happened in November, but middle of the month in November. And since that group came, I've actually seen other schools that have picked this up. So, we were the first wave of this. It's called the New Hampshire Tech Alliance. And it largely focuses on young women and women, exposing them to careers in technology. And we involve the boys. And the boys actually enjoyed it as much as the girls. And I got a message through the grapevine that you were looking...
Yeah, I was just interested.
So, we had pictures. It'll be on Channel thirteen. John Judson filmed it. There were five women who came, and it was inspirational, I would use that word.
Thanks, just piqued my interest.
I'm sorry, do you have any questions for me?
So, they came and they presented things to girls that were interested or all of them?
We involve boys and girls. We did...
Was it a group of six, seventh graders or everybody?
We set up five different, it was a rotation of classes, workshops, if you will. They were in the building for about two and a half hours. And they were about thirty-minute, twenty-five-minute presentations. But if you watched Channel thirteen, I believe it's on, it was a great segment.
I'll check it out.
We also did a shock news last, two weeks ago.
Thank you.
The gym is wonderful, really wonderful.
Thank you.
Can two teams practice in there at the same time?
Yes, yes, we do.
So, where does... So, I'm assuming, oh, you don't have two boys teams?
Well, we have a boys team, a girls team, and a wrestling team. So, we have three teams that are sharing the space. So, we have a rotation, and that's worked out fairly well. And actually, when there are games, and there are, we have quite a few basketball games, we're able to move the wrestling team down to the cafeteria. Working great, they are.
No rec programs have come in yet?
Well, they would come in after, they would come in after five-thirty.
Are they doing that, though, or not yet?
HYI?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely. Started the very first week, we're there.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Good evening, how is everyone?
Good, great.
Good. You have my report, do you have any questions?
Is that an increase, two point five percent?
See, we had three new move-ins. And then we had another student, there was an increase of four, and then we had another student identified, which isn't, at this time... which isn't, at this time in the year, after the RTI process goes through. So, we put kiddos if concerns arise from their teachers. Usually somewhere around mid-October, we start them in an RTI process, it was usually six to eight weeks, and then from there, we would have referrals. And so, it's not unlikely that we're going to start to identify kiddos within our own district that may have struggles with learning.
Well, congratulations, Steve, on your compliance and improvement monitoring report. That's awesome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Top of the heap.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, one more year, we, at this point, the state won't be coming in to assess.
That's great, Jess, good job.
Excited about that. Any other questions?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You too.
Thanks.
May I have a question?
No.
Okay.
Superintendent's report.
So, tonight I'd ask that you accept the following donations. It's in my report, if you want to kind of follow along, but Rotary Club David mentioned five hundred dollars for the Giving Tree. At Marston, the Rotary Club also gave five hundred dollars. The Hampton Welfare Office gave two thousand dollars to Marston for student health and wellness activities. At Center School, Eastern Bank gave eight hundred dollars for books, and they were distributed at the annual Christmas parade.
That was awesome.
Which was a terrific idea.
It was really good.
Fabulous.
So many kids that I saw were like so excited to get, more so than the candy that was being thrown.
Yeah, I prefer the books over the candy. And lastly, district-wide, and this often comes from Janine, two local families gave twenty-five hundred dollars to the district for food drives during the course of the year. So, I'd ask that you'd accept those donations.
All of them at once?
I think that's.
Okay. Can I get a motion from the superintendent? To accept all of the donations the superintendent presented? Second, Frank, discussion done. All those in favor? Thank you.
I think as I listen tonight, many of the things that you've already asked about or talked about tonight, you've highlighted in, out of my report. I just, we continue, we have a second cohort for CAGS program. I think Les, you asked about that. And so, we have, we'll have teachers from Hampton, Portsmouth, SAU fifty, which is Ryan Greenland, and twenty-one. They'll be joining us this year. I also spent sessions at each of the three schools to provide an overview of the Code of Conduct and the Code of Ethics that has been recently adopted by the New Hampshire State Board of Education. So, everybody got a copy of that, and everybody is aware of it, and I walked through that Code of Conduct for the staff. I also included that in the packet so that you could see what I went over. I think we'll probably talk a little bit about policies in a little bit. There's a number of them that Pepper and I have been working on. Nathan's going to report out on the building a little bit and some of the work that's being done. So, other than that, if you have any questions, I, things that aren't included in here.
I have a quick question. We're using a facilitator for demonstrated success. We've been using demonstrated success for a while.
Right.
Do we have any in-house people that are qualified or could facilitate as opposed to spending money?
We're seeing that now at Center School. They're pretty much, with the exception of, we asked Demonstrated Success to work with our transition second to third. So, they're working with second-grade teachers and third-grade teachers, so we have common language, common understanding. But that's really being phased out. Sent, Marston, this is probably their last year with Demonstrated Success. Our teachers are very skilled at using and reading and understanding the data, how to use it, and, and taking the strategies to help kids.
So, I'm imagining.
You heard some of them tonight, you heard it tonight.
So, I'm imagining in the future, we probably have some in-house people.
Absolutely.
That could do that training for us.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Could you maybe explain to the public what you're looking for for the strategic plan? And if you're looking for any help from the public?
Yeah, that's a great question. We started the strategic plan, we had our first focus session last week. They, we started with the leadership team, and the two facilitators joined us, and I spent a couple of hours with the leadership team talking about strengths and the challenges in our school district and in terms of where they see the district going over the next three to five years. Tomorrow, we'll be doing that same exercise with support staff, elementary support staff and middle school support staff, as well as elementary teachers tomorrow. So, they'll both have sessions with our facilitators. Next week, before the break, we'll do the same exercise with a focus group made up of middle school teachers. The groups are made up of about fifteen to eighteen people. People volunteer, there's not an expectation that they have to do it, but we do encourage it. As I moved around the three buildings this week and met with the staffs, I asked them to be a part of that so that their voices were heard and have an opportunity to share where they think the district should go. But the next phases are really, will happen after the new year. We decided to wait until the new year got well underway and after Martin Luther King holiday, that we would be having a group, a focus group with parents, and parents of elementary, parents of middle, and parents who are middle high school. So, we have that nice transition, and we can see the needs that parents might see. We also have a scheduled group for community, that would be businesses and local folks that are involved in the community, and invite them in to spend an hour, an hour and a half with them around what they see, the vision and the mission and the core beliefs in terms of education in Hampton. And finally, we will have a, not finally, we have two more. One is with you as a school board. They will come in and do a work session with you around what your vision and mission and view is of education in Hampton, and, and also elected and government folks. So, we would invite Board of Select, Select Persons, we would invite Planning Board, our elected officials and new reps, and have a group so that we can hear from everyone. We'll take all of that data, and I've already seen the first report from the leadership team, and put that together and, and work on developing a mission and a vision and core beliefs and where we, where we will go over the next three to five years as a district. We really encourage people to get involved. I have a letter ready to go out. It was a little too soon to send it out into the community, so I'm kind of holding back until holidays kind of get over a little bit, and then we'll reach out to the community to have them participate. Does that kind of cover it?
Okay. Any other questions for the superintendent? All right.
Just a quick overview of the enrollment. You can see that on, it's right after my report. We picked up six students this month, the month of December, but other than that, it stayed pretty steady from the beginning of the year. We opened up in August with ten sixty-one, and we're at ten sixty-six right now. Class sizes are on the other side, on the backside of that sheet. I also included the agenda that I, that, as you know, I meet fairly regularly with the C organization. And so, the agenda is in there, as well as the agenda for preschool. Because I, we met with them on Monday, last Monday, just so you have a sense of what's happening.
Can I ask who attended?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask who attended that?
Attended?
The preschool meeting?
The, that is attended by the local private schools in town. My first school, the Village Preschool, Head Start, teachers from Center, kindergarten teachers, as well as our social worker, our directors of special services.
Robbins Child Place?
Robbins Child Place, I'm trying to remember everyone. They had a presentation on OT and the Zones of Regulation so that we can have that transfer from private schools into our kindergarten. And it's been a great dialogue over the, Tim's, I didn't mention, but Tim's always there also, representing the early learning at his school, and the two preschool teachers.
Guess I'd like just to register my disappointment that a certain other school was not there from Northampton.
We've.
You've reached out to them a number of times.
I've reached out, and I, we keep trying, and we know that people are very busy, and, you know, sometimes that's at night, and it's over beyond their school day. So, we recognize that, but we continue to reach out. I believe, I could be wrong, I'm going to make a prediction, I suppose, but I believe that the state of New Hampshire is going to step forward, induce more, make a greater effort to support preschools. The governor, the governor's wife is on board.
It would be nice if all the local preschools got on board with it.
Right. And we have a great group, and, and it's recognized across the state for the, for the fact that we get together and, and at least have dialogue. And they visit Tim's school, and teachers visit their schools. So, it, I think it's been a pretty productive effort.
Any other questions from the superintendent? Well, I'm just going to bring something up because it was in, in the agenda that you had with C. It was the two nineteen, two twenty calendar. Actually, I'm not sure if this does, but I forwarded all of the board members a letter that I received from Amy Murphy, seeking more early release days. I don't know if Pete, because I just sent it yesterday or something. People want to talk about that now, or do you want to put that as an agenda item for the January meeting?
I'd like to put it as an agenda item for the January meeting, but I'd like to get some support material regarding other SOUs and number of.
Okay. There was quite a bit in there, but.
And again, what they, what we do in-house. What our, our district does for professional development. We know there's a lot in-depth in there.
Okay. So, we'll put this as an agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know if Amy is here. Is Amy here?
Yeah, she's.
Amy, would you, would you like to come up and answer those questions quickly?
I could certainly try, I don't know if anybody's had the opportunity to really gather any questions.
I've read it.
Okay.
Okay. Pepper, you just had a question, I think.
I guess I, being on the committee, I know that, you know, everybody has an opportunity, and they take full advantage of it for professional development. Everybody is certified, I just didn't know why you were reaching out to twenty-one.
Maybe Amy can briefly give you an overview.
Yeah.
You don't need to go to too much depth, because it's going to be an agenda item for January.
Absolutely. There are so many new initiatives, there are so many, our curriculum is in a constant state of changing. So, it gives us a great opportunity to be able to work as a team. Like, for example, we talked about demonstrated success. So, on Friday, Jason Track and I will be meeting as math representatives. But what happens is, we're one very small voice, and we have two hours with demonstrated success. To be able to have the entire team work together in a meeting like that would be far more beneficial and would kind of ensure more continuity when we're directly instructing students. So, that's just one example. Last year, when we had those extra thirteen hours that we had to make up, and what we ended up doing with that was, fifth grade, our team, we took two separate days where we had five hours each, and we did a tremendous amount of work on some math curriculum and some language arcs, reviewing some of our assessments, because we're doing so many new things, but then we also want the opportunity to be able to reflect on it. We have common planning time, which is a very short period of time. There are our small windows of opportunity, but we've been asking for more release time to be able to work for a couple of hours in the afternoon. And if you look at all of the surrounding communities, everybody else is doing these release days. We have so many new initiatives, and we don't have the opportunity to really focus on those. Dr. Yackley has done some great stuff explaining to us what the problem is. However, now we need the tools. We need the tools to be able to deal with these children. And we, we deal with kids on an everyday basis. I think what, what Raymond is going to do is wonderful. I think that that's great, but we have children in crisis every day. That doesn't meet that level of crisis, but we need to know how to best deal with them. I mean, I've been an educator for twenty years, you and I worked together for a long time, and, and things have really changed. So, those are the kind of messages, those are the kind of opportunities that we think that we would really, that would benefit our entire staff if we had more release time, like many of, many of the other surrounding communities do. If you look at all of the other calendars for Exeter and Portsmouth and New Market and Epping, they generally have about one a month. And SAU, they have the SAU-wide calendar, but then each of the individual schools adds on their own days. So, we're just looking for those kind of opportunities as well.
Okay. So, this is going to be an agenda item.
Absolutely.
For the January meeting. I would ask that, I'm hoping everybody got my email, I never know.
I have it, I printed it.
Okay. Everybody take a look at that before. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, and I'd be more than happy if you, you know how to reach me, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. And once again, I'm speaking on behalf of RC membership. I'm a member of the Professional Development Committee. We brought that forward, that we would like more release time, more opportunities to work together. So, there are a lot of people that I'm, my, my voice is representing a lot of people, it's not just Amy Murphy.
Would, would more summer, would more summer hours help also, or not?
I don't, I'm, I'm not sure if more summer hours, they, they certainly could help, but it's, what's hard is to.
It needs to be during, it needs to be during the year when.
During the school year where it's really more applicable.
Right, okay.
You know, opportunity to be able to reflect on, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot of creating our own assessments. So, to be able to reflect on that and having the full team there with full, with a, with a, an extended period of time is, is so beneficial. I mean, I really kind of laid it out in the letter, but we have a wealth of knowledge in, I mean, there are so many amazing teachers, and to be able to work together for an extended period of time is really to our district's benefit.
So, I'm sure we'll see you in January, for sure.
Absolutely, but feel free to reach out to me in the meantime. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Mr. Lanny. Unless I've missed someone. I don't think so.
So, the financials stand for themselves. I guess I could offer you a couple of quick notes about the building project. This phase of our abatement has wrapped up, which is great because that allows us to move out of the way of demolition that has to continue in the thirties and sixties wing. We still have a small element of abatement that'll have to happen next summer. So, they're back to work on demolition, they are working on electrical roughing in. Steel studying is going in on the top floor, and they'll continue to move steel metal studying, will continue to move down. We had to open up the attic over the thirties wing and pull in, push in a, an air handling element, and, and that's been completed and cleared, sealed back up. Temporary heat for that element of the building, that element of the whole project, the older elements. Temporary heat should be in by the end of this week, which is good to replace the old systems if they can continue to do their demolition. And they continue to work on installation of windows as they go. So, you continue to see new windows going in.
Right, they look great.
Great things are happening moving forward.
All righty.
So, that's the project. Any questions on any other elements of the, of my report?
No.
There are a couple of items that we can take this when you're ready.
And happy holidays to our administrators.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hey, it's really part and parcel of a policy conversation we can have later, but I, I added to my report a comment about surveillance cameras and the policies that'll go along with that. And so, I guess I would bring it to your attention because I want to, I wanted to make sure that the conversation, that we at least had it. We have security cameras on all three buildings, and we have, as a part of the project at Hampton Academy, and as a part of the security efforts that we've got going on in the other buildings, we've upgraded those to digital cameras, so the resolutions are better, the distances that we can collect are better. We have always had cameras at entrances, even in the lobbies, capturing the comings and goings. What, what we're moving forward with now, first at the academy, but it'll eventually happen in the other buildings, is following the recommended. is following the recommendations of Homeland Security and Emergency Management through the security assessments that we've had and we're locating cameras elsewhere inside the building. These are cameras that'll capture entrances to common areas like the gym or the cafeteria, they'll capture hallways, stairwells. This does two things, it, it, it is a surveillance and monitoring, uh, recommendation that Homeland Security has made for the everyday, which for us is not somebody sitting, a police officer, for instance, sitting watching the cameras, but it allows for forensic analysis, you wanna go back because there was some vandalism or there was an incident, you can go back on the tapes, but it also allows us to have eyes on in the hallways and the passages if there ever were an incident, so from the police station, from the central office, from even the cruiser in the yard, they could access video and see what was happening inside the building. I'd bring this to your attention simply because although we, we are by policy and by law able to do so, we've never outside of the entrances really had cameras down the hallways. There is law that speaks to videotaping of instruction in classrooms, none of these cameras will capture classrooms, so we don't, it's not an opt-in, opt-out kind of thing, but I wanted to act, I wanted to bring it to your attention and make sure that there was at least a moment of discussion about this so that, so that honestly, if someone says later, well, when did you put a camera to look in that hallway, I could say, December, December twelfth, whatever day this is, we talked about it, this isn't gonna happen at the academy for another month or two, we're gonna run this one more time with the, the local PD and make sure that we have a chance to look at it, and your policy process has to continue to make sure that our retention and such is in place, but I wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, uh, the principal at Hampton Academy, if there was a shoving incident in the hallway, could review that incident?
Yes.
And work through he said, she said?
Right.
I had that and it was one of the best things I ever had, I spent a lot of time on it because you have to, takes a little bit of time to find it, but, um, I would wholeheartedly endorse that.
We have, right now, the plan doesn't put cameras in the stairwell, but it, but it cap, video would capture second floor and third floor and the time date stamp would say you walked in and you came out a minute later, you clearly walked up the stairs, you walked in and didn't come out for twenty minutes, what were you doing for twenty minutes in the stairwell? Obviously, down the line, if we ever found that we had a problem, we could drop more, but for right now, it simply is, it's new to be, to be beyond the entrance, the lobby, and I wanted to make sure that I brought that to your attention.
Sure, it's a great idea.
So that, that sets the study stage for some of the revisions that we offered up in one of the, the surveillance policies that you'll talk about tonight, uh, which really was just to match, uh, the School Boards Association, their recommendations, their new language, which is consistent with current law, so, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Loney?
Yep.
Okay. We have some retirements. Do you wanna do these one at a time, folks? Yeah, I think so. We have a retirement, uh, planned retirement from Sharon Pastor. Motion. Moved Frank, seconded Andrea, any discussion? All those in favor? We have a planned retirement from Ann Kloss from Center School, moved Frank. Seconded Pepper. Any discussion? All those in favor? Notice of retirement from Irene Grand, uh, Hampton Academy. Motion, Andrea, seconded Frank, discussion? All those in favor? A notice, our planned retirement from Gail McDonald, Hampton Academy, I'll move that. Second, Andrea. Discussion, all those in favor? We have a notice of retirement from a special ed teacher at Morrison School, I hope I pronounced this right, Nancy Pietrantonio. Alright, all that phonics did pay off.
There you go.
Moved Andrea, seconded Frank, all those in favor? Am I dating myself, they'll still be fine.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Just, just as a point of information, you know, we've done it in the past and I think we should consider in the future. These people have a lot of experience and we've used retirees as resources in the past and I hope that we might consider using some of these people, if they're willing, as resources in the future. I just hate to lose the expertise that a lot of our teachers are leaving with because, just because, you know, they're retiring doesn't mean they still couldn't have a lot to contribute to us, so.
Some of us who have retired just want to forget.
They all have plans and I'm not sure where written into them.
Okay, well, as long as we offer, as long as we put it out there.
Absolutely, you know, we've always, we do have a couple of retirees who substitute for us quite frequently.
Just hate to lose that expertise.
Right, but as I talk to them, they all have a plan.
They know what they're gonna do.
Mm.
Good for them.
Uh, we have some warrant articles.
So, uh, you wanna acknowledge the letter you got from Mary Louise on the building?
Yes, we can do that, we received a very nice letter from Mary Louise Wolsey, selectmen, you all have it in your packet? I don't know if we have to make a motion to...
No, read it out loud so the people know. It was just nice to hear that she and so many others.
Because I was gonna take you off my...
She and so many others have made comments, I mean, I was at the post office and whatever.
Chairman Shepherd and the rest of you, this morning, I had the pleasure of accepting your invitation to the open house at the academy to view the renovation work, to date, I admit to being quote blown away. This is one of the smartest investments we have made in this community and every penny is worth it. My congratulations to our study committee and the talented contractors and tradesmen who put the dream together. It's a success beyond my wildest dreams, thank you for this outstanding contribution to local education. Again, it's worth every penny.
Mary Louise, nice.
Okay, we are at warrant articles.
So, there are four things that I think you can act on if you like. I would say to you first that Articles One and Two, you have already previously voted on, but Three, Four, Five, as they're envisioned, you have not, so you could deal with those three that have not been voted. And the, and the fourth, and the fourth item is to update you and, um, Frank certainly can speak to this, but at your, at the budget committee meeting on the Fourth of December, when we were presenting, the first thing that happened, um, relative to us, I guess, was that the budget committee took a successful vote to require that their vote tallies for their recommendations of the money articles be listed on the warrant. We haven't taken an actual vote, although by consensus, there seemed to be some support for it, so I would put that to you as well. As we contemplate putting the warrant together and finishing it, do you want the school board's vote tallies to accompany your recommendation as well?
I would make the recommendation that we do that, otherwise, we're going to get pushed back from the budget committee.
Personally, I wouldn't care. Okay, but Ginny's not here tonight.
Right.
So, if we voted on it tonight, it wouldn't be as supportive, it would be listed as four oh oh.
But I thought we voted on these, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we voted on all this at the last meeting at the SAU when we discussed, prior to us bringing the budget over, these were discussed and we voted on it and we had a full vote.
Yeah, I thought we did too.
On Articles One and Two, you voted on the budget, you voted on the assessment.
Yes, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was all good articles.
So we know those, we know those are five oh oh, One and Two.
No, we didn't have a, I didn't have a warrant before you looked at it.
So, I thought we did, we voted in principle.
Thought we in general voted on using a tally, yeah.
I thought we voted in principle on it.
I, I thought we did too.
You, you had a consensus, not a formal vote, that you would put your tally on the warrant article, but you didn't have the warrant yet.
No, I'm talking about the actual warrant article, we discussed a hundred thousand dollars.
We talked about it, but we didn't actually have the language to present to you.
Well, let's do first things first, um, we need a motion to, uh, e- either, well, we need a motion to put our vote tallies in the appropriate place on the warrant.
I'll make a motion to do that, okay.
Seconded Frank, I don't think we need much discussion, I think it, it helps the voter.
Right.
All those in favor? Okay, so we're gonna put our vote tallies.
Here's what I think, in answer to your other concern, it would be helpful for me, I think, if, if I knew that there was, even with four of you, support for these other articles, so that we can begin to move forward with the draft. In any case and in all events, you have the opportunity at the public hearing or following the public hearing to reconsider, based on the public's contribution, any recommendations.
Okay.
And so whether by, we can find a way, I think certainly you would like to have five, five votes cast. If I knew that we had at least four votes cast and we were moving ahead with this warrant, great, we can, when we have Ginny again with us, take additional votes to update this so that we get a, a full, a full complement.
Then I have a question on number four.
Yes, sir.
Uh...
Language change, anything you like to add to the draft.
Oh, it's the sum of a hundred thousand for the third resource officer.
That was what we used, that's what we used on the second, yeah, so I didn't change it.
Oh, in my mind, it was fifty, fifty and fifty.
No, no, it was, we picked up the full vote and, uh, I would like to make a comment on item number four that we went ahead with promoting this and putting it as a warrant article based on feedback from the community. At the, uh, safety meeting, they wanted, but we at that time said we, we'd have to go baby steps.
For number four.
Yeah, that, that was, that was...
Well, let's, let's do them, uh, can I have a motion to accept number three? Frank, seconded Andrea, this is item three. Uh, discussion, all those in favor, so that's four zero zero. Uh, number four, this is the, uh...
I need to make a quick change.
Yeah.
I, I just copied this from last year and there's one word in the, in the par, in the sentence on the second line, for the purpose of a third, school resource officer. You see what says second, I should make that third.
Well, actually, no, I read that, I read that closely, it caught my eye, but it was...
But it's a se, oh, maybe it's a second one percent on Marston.
It's a second one percent on Marston.
So leave it then, maybe that makes more sense, maybe that makes more sense, okay. Because, uh, again, that was last year's language and I, but I think it does...
No, but that makes sense, a second one.
Alright, good, then use it like it is.
Uh, so number four, motion, Andrea, seconded Pepper.
Seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor? Andrea, four zero zero. And the last one is the child benefit services, is that the figure that you got from Teresa?
Yeah, we're still waiting, we don't, just so you know, and if it makes a difference in your voting, we have not yet received the petition with the verified twenty-five signatures, but...
You'll get it.
But that's the language of it, I'm sure we'll get it.
She's...
Moved Frank, seconded Andrea, discussion none, all those in favor? Okay.
Remind you that we have two positions that will come open for, um, election down the board and the district clerk that we appointed, where we appointed Shirley, uh, to stand in as acting, that comes up for the remaining two years on the term that we had voted last year.
Does she wanna keep doing that?
I do believe she's going, she intends to put her name in, yes, sir, continue.
Okay, I believe we're down to policy review, yes?
Yes, we are, um, it's on, we, we're starting on page eighty-five. So, um, as you know, Pepper and I reviewed this, this is your second read on non-discrimination policy, there's no change with the exception of adding gender identity to that policy around discrimination, non-discrimination.
I would move that we accept, uh, this is AC?
Yes.
AC?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Frank?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Doesn't matter.
All those in favor?
Pep, you wanna do the next one?
Yes, the next one is philosophy of the school district. The board will periodically develop a strategic plan that includes a mission and vision statement. The board should review and revise this statement annually.
Motion to accept, Andrea, second, Pepper, discussion, all those in favor? Four zero. Ooh, minutes!
Minutes.
Uh-oh.
So in your packet on page eighty-seven are your current minutes, um, the one on page eighty-nine, this is a first read, by the way, eighty-nine and ninety are the newly recommended policy changes uh, from the New Hampshire School Board Association, based on new language, uh, for the RSA. So they're recommending that you make those changes and it's really, um, has to do with, um, taking votes in non-public and making sure that there's a roll call and who voted, um...
Okay, so, this is a first read?
You, you pretty much, yeah, this is a first read and you, by the way, you pretty much adhere to this anyway, so it's not a new, it's not a big change.
So we don't have to vote on this?
Not tonight, um, the next one is the one that, um, Nathan referenced and that's the video and audio surveillance on school property, if you look on page ninety-four, um, that's the original policy, okay?
Right, that's the one you have...
That's the one you currently have, so you already have a policy and so, um, what we're proposing are the changes on ninety-one, ninety-two and ninety-three. And again, first read.
Motion, for, oh, I don't need it, first read.
Okay, most of it is very similar to what you have, please take a few minutes and go back again, but when we looked at this, the biggest change was making sure that, um, if I can go to that last section, no school shall record in any way, any school classroom, for any purpose, without school board approval, after a public hearing and without written consent of the teacher and the parent, and because you know, we already have some of that, uh, in place, uh, in terms of, uh, recording.
But it did, it did call out and identify extracurricular and other events and ceremonies that, that are not considered classroom, it can be, and it also, um, it also spelled out some specific, some specifics of student discipline, which again, aren't covered in your current policy, but in the School Boards Association recommended updates, it was more specific, that and special education. Obviously, they've run into a couple of situations where there has been a concern expressed and the policy was done not specific enough, so they've added some of it.
What happens when a child is in a school concert, that they have a, um, a thing where the parents don't want them photographed?
John's made aware of it and they can blur him out, uh, I, I, we've not come across that. We have very few youngsters that we get any questions around their ability to be videotaped. The principals work with John on that.
Okay, and the special ed, uh, video and audio recordings, do they become part of their...
They can become part of the, um, their record, their individual education record because in some ways, that's the only way to show evidence of students' progress.
And they can be recorded while in a classroom?
Uh, they...
Doing performance?
They can be, to be, doing performance tasks, but only them and with permission from the parent.
Okay.
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 Very unusual now, um, that they would do that and set them, set them out, you know?
Right.
Well, that was a first read.
Yes, that's correct, so take, please take a look at that, the next one is, uh, one that Pepper and I spent some time on, I passed this on, it's Greg's reviewing it along with his tech, the technology department, this is huge. This data governance and security of data is huge, uh, this is all come out, this is a priority, it's new policy for you and it's required by law. I've taken the school board, uh, Pepper and I reviewed the school board, um, uh, recommendations, um, they were pretty much in line with what we practice here, um, but again, this is a very, very encompassing policy and, uh, there may be some financial impact down the road, so we have to keep, keep a look, uh, take a look at that.
Is this first read?
First read.
Okay, so a question, do we use something similar to Iron Mountain?
Yes, we use Iron Mountain.
We use Iron Mountain. A lot? A lot?
No, no more than, no more than we have to, and it's doing great, because we have our archiving solution, optical character recognition and archiving that we're using as much as we can now for accounting records and removing their special ed records.
And does that meet these requirements as being safe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, and meets the, and meets the definition of blue ink original for recall and data verification later.
Okay. So EHB, is this, it's all the same. So that brings us to, boy, there's a lot in record retention, isn't there?
Yeah. Record retention, you've had, as you can see, you had a policy 2010, it's on 101. These are all related, and that's why we kind of brought them to you together. Data record retention, you have, this is what you have on page 101, right up through And the new one is, starts on page 106. That's, again, much more specific around special education records, around litigation records, right to no requests. All of those things are now very much laid out for you to re, to have in your policy. And again, this came out of the legislation last year and the board. And then the same local record retention schedule, I think this is an important thing to have. People always ask, how long do I have to keep this record? How long do we have to hold it? And as you can see, some of it is permanent forever, and we use the system that Nathan just described, so we're not keeping paper copies, but we have an obligation to keep things based on these recommendations. I think it's very helpful for everyone. Again, first read.
Okay. And that takes us somewhere up to page. Oh, that's it.
You.
That's it, I think.
Yeah, that's it.
Jackie?
Yeah. You asked me to go back and look at the minutes from October 9th, based on the, what was said. The best way I could do it was to go back and watch the video, and that's what I did. And so I took what Jackie and Rachel said, and that would be the correction to the October 9th minutes. So if, if you accept this, then I will finally post those October 9th minutes, because we haven't posted them formally yet, because you didn't approve them. You asked, I go back.
Okay, but it's an understanding, if I remember correctly, that 7,500 was to help to freight a cost for all students regard, you know, in relation to lunch, snacks.
That's what it says in there. That's what it says.
Everything.
Across the board.
Across the board.
Yeah, across the board.
To reduce costs for all students. It's in there.
Yeah. But, no, I was referring to across the board, but it could be related to anything, snacks, et cetera.
Right.
Because they don't, you know, so they don't have to buy their lunch, quote unquote.
So then.
Yeah.
I'll have them, I'd accept the motion to approve the minutes of October 9th.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Motion? Pepper, seconded Frank. Discussion? Okay. So those are all same. So we just did the October 9th revision. Oh, now, here we go.
There we go.
November 1st minutes, these are our budget workshop.
Yep, four pages.
Yeah. November 1st. Moved Pepper. Seconded Andrea. Discussion? Shouldn't be. All those in favor? Four zero. Okay. November 8th, our second budget.
Make the motion to accept.
Moved Andrea. Seconded Frank. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Then we had the regular board meeting minutes of November 13th. Andrea?
The only connection I see is on 132.
Yeah.
The, how it spelled, Geskis.
Oh, okay. What is it?
I think it's G E S.
G E S.
K U S. Okay. November 13th minutes with that minor change. Frank, seconded. Pepper?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Yep. 13.
We have another one for November 13th. This must have been a non-public.
Non-public.
It is. Okay. Motion, Andrea.
I'll second.
Seconded Pepper. All those in favor? Okay. This was a budget, quick meeting that we had. The SAU office.
19th.
19th.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say.
19th.
There it is.
Motion, Andrea, seconded Frank. All those in favor? Okay. November 29th.
Make the motion to accept.
Second.
Seconded Pepper. All those in favor? Okay. Correspondence? Well, I just read that letter from Selectman Woolsey. We, and we got a, I got an email from C. Amy Murphy that we talked about, and you're going to look at a little more in depth before our next meeting. It's going to be on the agenda. Signing of manifests, did everybody get those? Andrea, did you get those over there?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll go.
Okay, they're done.
December and January. Any questions, comments on that?
Yep.
I do.
Okay. Frank?
On January 9th, we have our warrant articles, so, you know, I think we all should, who can make it should show up.
Did they, did they define that definitely now?
As far as I know.
Well, I had the ninth of the 10th.
I'll be at tomorrow night's meeting if anything changes, but you're on the schedule for the ninth on the warrant articles, January.
Okay, we are. All right. Because they, he had talked about the ninth or the 10th.
No, it's the ninth.
Okay.
No discussion.
It's on there that says 7:00 PM, SAU 90 warrant.
That's with the budget?
Budget, yes.
Yes.
So presuming that Ginny can join us on the 8th for your regular monthly meeting?
Right.
We'll include on the agenda a review of the warrant, so that you can take any other vote you want.
Okay.
And that public hearing is the 15th, and that'll be right here with the budget committee, but that's the.
That's on January 15th?
15th.
Okay. All righty.
We, we don't control that date.
Yeah.
Andrea, we don't control that date. You know that, right? It's the budget committee's hearing. The only one we control is a deliberative session in February.
Okay. If there's no other new business, I'd accept a roll call vote to go into non-public.
Aye.
Under RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. A, I guess.
What time is it?